Welcome to the August 11, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. A meeting was held at 6:00 PM in the Council Chambers of City Hall for clarification of the agenda. The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen who is wishing to address the Commission shall first be recognized by the Chair and shall give his or her name and address for the record. If the citizen wishes to read any documentation of any sort to the Commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the Chair. There will be a three-minute time limitation for presentation to the Commission. Agenda item number one is roll call and disclosure of conflict of interest. Matt, will you please call roll?
Shanda.
Here, I made a site visit for agenda item number three and will be recusing myself from agenda item number four due to conflict of interest.
Anderson.
Present and nothing to report.
Roberts?
Here, nothing to report.
Phillips?
Here, nothing to report.
Agenda item number two is approval of the minutes. The Commission may wish to approve the minutes from the clarification and regular meetings from July 28, 2021. Is there a discussion by the Commission on these minutes? With no discussion, I would like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes? Second.
We have a motion by Phillips and a second by Roberts. Matt, will you call the vote?
Phillips?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Shanda?
Yes. There's an empty seat over here, sir, if you'd like to sit down. At this time, we will move on to agenda item number three, public hearing for the zone map amendment. Trevor Henderson has submitted an application for the zone map amendment to rezone approximately 2.33 acres of property from residential estate to residential medium-density multifamily. The subject property is located at the dead end of West Hayden Street. During the public hearing, I would like to ask everybody to please silence their cellphones. The applicant will be limited to 10 minutes. There will be a three-minute limit on public testimony. Names are required for all those presenting and testifying. Questions and comments should be pertinent to the application and be addressed to the Commission. As this is a public hearing, there should be no questions, comments, or applause from the audience. Should the meeting go longer than 8 o'clock, the Commission may take a scheduled 10-minute break. Commission members must make their decision regarding the application on facts already in the record and information presented at the public hearing. So at this time, I would like to declare the public hearing open. I would like to invite the applicant to come to the podium. Yep, the next 10 minutes are yours.
Okay, I'm glad we have opportunities to discuss opportunities like this and have a nice facility in which to do this. I'd like to read something from the get-go, if I may, from Sunny Shaw, Executive Director of Housing Alliance and Community Partnerships. She says, "Hi. The fact is, we have a real housing shortage in Pocatello. Two years ago, our voucher participants had a 63% lease-up rate for every 100 vouchers out searching. 63 were successful in lease-up. That lease rate has plummeted to 28%. Households, and especially those in lower-income brackets, truly struggle to find housing. The tight market has a trickle-down effect that impacts the population we serve the greatest. Furthermore, the lack of single-family units to purchase has caused those potential buyers to move into the rental market. Again, a tightening. There are many factors, and I could discuss them all day long. The ultimate point is that we have a shortage, and HACP, that's Housing Alliance and Community Partnership, sees it every day." The investors really believe that this is a good opportunity for this piece of property. It has a lot of open space, and they want to take advantage of the best part of it, in which to provide some additional housing in Pocatello. See a need, feel a need. There seems to be a lot of hysteria about getting into the hillside, and I'm not sure where that comes from because there hasn't been any discussion, any drawings submitted that shows any clear disturbance of the hillside. So I wanted to put that to rest right now, but I think it'd be cool if you had the money to kind of stair-step up into the slope there in some way, but it isn't practical because people would have to take an elevator or an escalator to get to their apartment. But we worked with the local architect here, and we did some rough sketching and did some measurements and plotted out how these buildings could fit in there. One thing that people don't realize is that you have to have economies of scale to make a project work. The type of area is that a single-family dwelling, I'm not sure if someone, you know, I'm not sure if they've noticed the properties, the homes built, the little narrow ones over here on Sublet and North Tent, those things I think are going to sell for $200,000, and they're just not very big. And so by the time you're looking at $150 a foot, $200 a foot to put a home, a nice home back in that area, I'm not sure many homeowners would want to do that. So it's kind of an orphaned piece of ground. It lends itself to multiple-family development. And duplexes, it's hard to come up, again, with economies of scale, by the time you have the two sides, you just can't generate enough income to justify the building cost. Fourplexes, I mean, they're looking to put close to, if their experience is worth anything in the past, it'll probably be nearly $650,000 in this experiment, in this venture, in this risk-taking opportunity to even make this thing go. What helps it is the close proximity to utilities. They're practically on top of a sewer line, a water line that they retrofitted. And I tried to have Levi Lusk email me his information on when that line was retrofitted that come down Lincoln and on over to Willow. That hasn't been that long ago when it was retrofitted, and so there's probably opportunity to absorb this, you know, there's only, what, 12 units? And so it's not like you're putting a five-story building there. That'd be cool, too, but you can't come up with a parking. Again, it's 2.33 acres, and there's enough buildable ground there to make it work. And we're short on housing. Questions?
Before I turn it over to the Commissioners for questions, could you please state your name and address?
Oh, certainly. Trevor Henderson, 410 Yellowstone Avenue, Pocatello, Idaho.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have one for the applicant. Looking at the site map you provided us, I am curious how commercial vehicles, namely like garbage trucks, or delivery trucks, or emergency-type vehicles will be able to access the property. I have concerns about their ability to exit onto Wyatt. They can obviously get in through Hayden. I don't know if they'll have, that alley is wide enough to have like a fire truck.
So what kind of large delivery trucks are you referencing?
Let's just use fire truck, for example. It's probably the largest truck that I can think that would have to access.
Uh-huh. They'd have to go in and come back out on West Hayden. Okay. There was a comment, I think Mr. Anglesey in one of the reports, maybe it was in the Journal Report, boy, wasn't that a rough article? He thought that they'd actually plowed snow there, and they would have to go in on the property, turn around, and plow it and push it back out to Willow, because the other end of where this property goes into the alley there, onto Wyatt, the plow truck couldn't make that corner at all. And so that place has not been, he made it sound like it's been maintained by the city, and I absolutely refute that. So to answer your question, I don't know, why would, in your opinion, why would a fire truck have to go all the way in there?
This is our turn to ask you questions, sir.
Okay, well, I'm just asking where that comes from.
Any other questions from the Commission?
The fire truck, I mean, there's a fire plug. They'd have to run out probably about 150 feet of hose, which is not uncommon to run from that plug to the middle of the block to the next plug. So it's not out of line at all. Thanks for the question.
Any other questions? I have a question for you regarding, you gave a preliminary layout of where you would place the buildings. It looks like you've met parking requirements. My question is, according to code, as far as setbacks and stuff like that, are you meeting those requirements for side yard mostly?
I believe so, yes.
Do you have any idea what amount of area you are cutting into the 15% slope here?
Like 0.1. I mean, if you look at the map, there's a line drawn, especially this one, it has the buildings, and you can see a squiggly line there. It took a great deal of time and effort to try to map that out, and that's the approximate toe of the bottom of the slope side. We're not into it at all. I don't want to say that. We're barely into it. I mean, if there's something there, it's just to make things level around the side of the building.
Commissioner, any other questions for the applicant?
I have one. There was some letters that mentioned cutting off access to existing homeowners for driveways or for garages. Has that been looked at?
Well, it's private property. People have trespassed on this for a number of years, and I believe the previous owner actually had come out and told people to remove their stuff from time to time around that, whatever you want to call it, that dumping yard or the tailings from the city had just dumped asphalt in there. So it is something we're going to have to work out, Madam Anderson, because that's a tough one, you know? It's private property. Hopefully, you get to do a little bit what you want to do with it, when you want to do with it. But it's, again, they're not here to jam anybody, but they're certainly not here to provide a free ride.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
I have one.
You are not the Commissioner. You'll have your turn. Please wait. This time, I would like to, if there's nothing else from the Commissioners, at this time, I'd like to hear from staff.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Jim Anglesey, Long-Range Planner for the City of Pocatello. The request before you is a proposed zone map amendment to rezone a parcel of property at the west end of West Hayden Street near the intersection of Willow and West Hayden Street. From residential estate, RE, to residential medium-density multifamily, RMM. The subject property is 2.23 acres, more or less, with 1.51 acres, more or less, having a slope of 15% or greater. RE does not permit duplexes, townhomes, or multifamily units. As currently zoned, the subject property would permit one single-family unit on the property as currently configured. The surrounding residential medium-density single-family, or RMS zoning district, of which a small portion of the subject property is zoned, would allow for a single-family unit or a duplex as currently configured. RMS would not allow additional units in the property, would allow additional units if the property is subdivided. RMS does not permit multifamily units. A zone map amendment from RE to RMM would significantly increase the allowed amount of density and intensity than what the surrounding districts would allow. The RE is separated by RMM, by residential low-density and residential medium-density single-family. Where the subject property is adjacent to an established RMS zoning district, the proposal to rezone a portion of the property from RE to RMS would better align with the community's best interest. Within the 300 feet of the external boundaries of the subject property, 17% of the total properties are undeveloped, and that due to steep slope are most likely unbuildable. 3% of properties are developed with multifamily units. 1% of properties are developed with a duplex, and 79% of the properties are developed with single-family units. Given the fact that multifamily units make up only 3%, and that 79% of the surrounding land uses within 300 feet of the subject property are single-family units, staff has determined that the proposed zone change and proposed development, as suggested, in the applicant's submitted documents, would not blend with surrounding intensity and density of land uses in the neighborhood. Notice was published in the Idaho State Journal, and a sign was posted on the subject property on July 27, 2021, and all property owners within a 300-foot feet of the external boundaries of the land being considered have been given notice with respect to the state noticing requirements. Staff has received written comment from the public regarding the application, and all comments have been received have been forwarded to Commission members for review. In consideration of the application, staff concludes that the proposed zoning map amendment is not compliant with Pocatello City Code, Section 172170. Should the Commission recommend approval of the subject application, staff recommends conditions as listed in the staff report, which, to be clear, would allow for a rezone to RMS rather than RMM. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions the Commission may have.
Does the Commission have any questions for staff? I would also like to remind you that Merrill is here and will be able to answer questions as well.
I have one. With the rezone that the staff is proposing, what kind of density would that be? Did you mention that? Sorry if you did.
As currently configured, the property would allow for a duplex or a single-family. Additional units could be permitted if it was subdivided.
Okay. Thank you.
If there is no other comments, no other questions for the staff, at this time, I would like to ask if there was any additional correspondence received that we have not seen.
No.
Thank you. Before I start the public testimony, I would like to remind each person, when you come to the podium, state your name and address. Please remember masks sometimes make it a little hard, so please speak clearly. Remember that you're addressing the Commission, not the audience or the applicant. You will be limited to three minutes and will be asked to stop when your time runs out. Please make your comments pertinent to the application, and there will not be any duplicate questions, concerns, or comments covered by previous testimony heard. At this time, I would like anyone providing testimony supporting the application to come forward.
When do I get a chance to?
You will.
Ask a question for Mr. Anglesey?
After, after the public testimony is done.
There's a gentleman behind you raising his hand.
In favor? Yes, please. Sorry. If you could stand at the microphone with the green tablecloth?
My name is Lee Dilly. My address is 140 Valley View Drive. Does that cover? Okay. I am the previous property owner. Sold it to current owners. And I just, having owned the property for like 26 years, we're very familiar with the neighborhood. In fact, we're also previous owners of the six, you know, department that is right next to this space. Although we didn't build it, so we didn't break any rules. That was already there. I had always looked at the property in terms of building fourplex or several other versions of using the space, different combination of housing, and had visited with the city with several plans that I had developed quite thoroughly, and never received any indication that there was any problem building what we wanted to build, multifamily. And then, all of a sudden, this zone came into being, and by the way, we were never notified, had no opportunity to comment on it. So the zone that's there now, just with no input from this property owner, me, is something that we've never understood why it exists that way. Having been involved with that property that long, I think we were on okay terms with the neighbors. There were a few times when we had to suggest people, "Don't stack things on our property," and they did, they cleaned up things. But it's a nice neighborhood, but it's a multifamily neighborhood. The percentages are approved buildings, but there's many that have been developed into the minimum duplexes, or at least two-family residences, and it just seems like a really good use of that property to help alleviate some of the housing problems. It's a good place to put people. Most of our versions visualize us being one of the occupants in that space.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Great, thank you.
At this time, I would like to ask if there was anybody else supporting the application? I won't forget to look behind me this time. Is there anyone providing testimony that's uncommitted to the application? At this time, I would like anybody providing testimony by opponents to the application. Who wants to go first?
Excuse me. I got a site document.
Please come to the micro, sir? Please come to the microphone and state your name first. Is there anybody else who would like to provide testimony opposing the application?
My name's J.C. Ride. I own 645 Willow, and I live at 750 West Wyatt. The first thing I'd like to address is, they said something earlier about the destabilization of the mountain. Seven or eight years ago, when I was there during the giant rainstorms, the whole hillside liquefied behind my house and came down and slammed into the back of my garage and my neighbor's house as well, filled my neighbor's house with mud, and wrecked the whole property. So I do feel like there's a little destabilization there on the hillside. Also, the other thing about there being extra sewer there, I live at 750 West Wyatt, and you guys send your pump trucks down there two or three times a year and try and pump out the sewage at that intersection, and there's the smell of raw sewage all day long, all summer long. So I feel like if you would add some more, it's just going to be worse. So, thank you.
The next testimony.
My name's Lynn Peterson. I live at 946 West Wyatt. My property is adjacent to his, and my property is also adjacent to the multifamily dwelling that's next door. We moved in there in 1967. Since that time, there's been shootings. I had to fix a hole in my house. There's been parole officers knocking cops, fights, everything with the multifamily dwelling that's already there. I believe that, or I want to mention, that increased population in that area might make that situation worse. That's one thing. Number two, I was looking at a picture, first aerial picture of the west side of Pocatello is 1919. That alleyway is there in 1919. Hayden isn't there, but that alleyway's there. Shutting that down is going to take away access that's been there for 100 years. I don't see why that would happen. Procedure says that this shouldn't happen. It should have been, had easement already. And when I asked about that, they said, "Well, that was the end of the city limits when they made the easements." Well, I don't know what year that is, but I couldn't, the city has maintained that property. They've graded it, they paved it, they plowed it, and, oh yeah, plow gets around there. Fire truck comes by once a month and drives out to make sure that they can get through there. I imagine that's what it is. They drive through there. So I believe this change would be detrimental to the neighborhood, and I request it not be approved.
Thanks. Thank you. Whoever would like to speak next? Joe, do you want to go, or do you want me to? Okay, Dylan.
My name's Dylan Merle. I just moved in to 545 North Lincoln Avenue in December. One main concern I'm having is, when I moved in, I was told that I would have access to my backyard at all times.
Sir, can you be quiet, please, so we can make sure we can hear him like we heard you? Thank you.
That I would have access to my backyard with vehicles, because I don't have enough parking in front of my house for two vehicles. And I was also told I would never have a backyard neighbor because of where that hill was, and at the time, there was a bunch of trees, and no one wanted to remove those. And so with him coming in and trying to set up the parking of this zone along that road of West Hayden, I feel like it would cause a lot of issues and backup of vehicles in the way, so I couldn't access my backyard. And then, with that also being said, with how fire trucks were brought up, the road has telephone poles on both sides and also get our power through it. the road has telephone poles on both sides and also get our power through it. So, how can that be, like, no easements anywhere on it because of the fact of it's a utility lane? And there's also the sewer that goes down that whole thing. I'm pretty sure my sewer's also hooked up to that same sewer line. And I just don't think that we could actually fit 24 vehicles to park in between the houses there and still have access to our yards. And then, I was looking into some things and there's prescriptive easements of Idaho. And that's, that prescriptive easements have been recognized in Idaho for decades. A person claiming a respective easement must prove by clear and convincing evidence that their use of the property in question was, one, open and notorious, two, continuous and uninterrupted, three, adverse and under claim of right with the actual or imputed knowledge of the owner of the servient tenant for the statutory period. Frequently, a prescriptive easement claim is defeated by evidence that the easement was used based on permission of the property owner at the time period for demonstrating a prescriptive easement is now quite long. For like 20 years. Prior to 2006, prescriptive period was five years. All of the above elements must be proven, which means a similar-
Okay, sir, that's your time. Thank you. Anybody else providing testimony in opposition to the application?
Yeah, that's her.
Sorry, I keep forgetting to look back. Just hold on.
Hi, my name is Marshall McGee. I live at 246 Skyline. Sorry, I don't recognize any of our planning and zoning people. Obviously, I haven't been in a meeting in a while. And I apologize. I should be more involved. We also have a house on Lincoln, the, and a house on Clark. So, I'm familiar with the neighborhood. That road, Lincoln and West Fremont Street, is a dangerous intersection. There's been at least one fatality there since I've lived in Pocatello. So, if we add another 12 units there, that's more than likely one of the roads that'll be traveled. So, I'm not, I'm not really excited about that. I'm extremely disappointed that, using the economy of scale argument, that that's the only way you can develop the property. Because it sounds like all of the existing homeowners will be impacted negatively by this. So, if they can come up with a plan that satisfies all of the people off of the alley and off of Hayden, then I would, I wouldn't be against having a development there. But I don't think this is the right development at the right time.
Thank you. I'm gonna look over here first. Anybody over here who would like to speak in opposition?
Hello, my name is Lynn Parker. I live at 267 Buchanan Avenue, which is a dead end and a few blocks from this area. And I would like everybody who is at this meeting to drive over to Lincoln Street or Johnson Street, starting at the Memorial Building, and drive down Lincoln and drive down Willow Street and see what you think. Because Willow Street is an alley. There's a pothole at the end of it, big enough to eat a Volkswagen. You're asking to die anytime you drive there, night or day, because there's no visibility. There's children playing. There's people going in and out. In other words, there is no access. And unless you're willing to address the issues on Lincoln and Johnson, when people are home from work, if they're parked in front of their houses, which really should be a good idea, there is nowhere to drive. So, there is one width of a car to drive down either of those streets. And if you're not familiar with the streets, people flip you off and try to run into you. And there has to be a driver's space so that you can pull over and get out of their way. That is not possible at any time people are home from work. So, I would like you to consider the consequences to not only the people directly on Willow Street and the streets on the other side, but the people on Lincoln and Johnson. And keep in mind that Fremont Street is the biggest street in the entire neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else back here? Over here?
Hello, my name is Joe Foster and I live on 605 Willow, right on the corner of Hayden and Willow. I'm probably the most affected by the outcome of this, should it happen. I just moved there to that house five months ago. And the criteria that I had to meet to buy that house fit my plan. I wanted a corner house with a garage, you know, and I liked the privacy. I have no houses behind me. I have none in front of me. And kinda, I don't have one on the side, you know. That was a deal breaker, buying that house. And all of a sudden now, you know, I will lose all these things that are important to me and why I chose the house in the first place. Also, I foresee, oh, and the parking would be like five feet from my house. I could imagine the trash, the noise all night long. I have animals. Anybody love animals? You know, are they safe outside anymore? You know, I think the whole plan's crazy, you know, I really do. When I look back there and I go, "Somebody's gonna build something over there." I mean, every time there's storm hits, I mean, my driveway is covered with gravel and dirt, because I'm right there. I can't even imagine so many building houses there, you know. So, and I also think that it'll affect my health eventually, especially my mental health, and, and lower the, my property value, you know. That's one of my main concerns. I'm retired and I live on a fixed income. And I have an investment in that home. If I lose it, there's gonna be hell to pay. Thank you.
I have asthma. That's why I wear it away from my face, because I have asthma. My name is Peggy Hill. I live at 555 North Lincoln. I have lived there for 23 years with my husband. We've always, we've seen neighbors come and go, no problem. I leave for work at 4:30 in the morning and like the lady said before, the streets are packed. We cannot sustain another 24 or more cars in our neighborhood. Where he's taking out a hill next to my house to put parking, if he takes the hill out, my tree's gonna tip over, because it's already leaning. So, if he takes out that tree to make parking, my big tree's gonna go timber. He, code enforcement gave me 14 days to pick up the easement. That's the property outside my fence, between Hayden and my, my fence. They, for 20 years, we've had to mow it. We've had to water it. We've had to trim it against our fence. We, we called code enforcement to see if we could park a trailer behind our property on the easement. They said as long as it didn't have a motor, no problem. He gave me 10 days to move my trailer. I like to go camping in the summer. He pulled up trees, left them in the street. We can't get our camper. We can't get our utility trailer out of our backyard, because the stumps are in our way. We can't, we can't even go camping. We can't take the stuff that we've loaded up in our utility trailer to take it to the dump, because he janked them out. If he builds this thing behind us, where is he gonna park? I don't know. He says he's gonna park, he's gonna change Hayden into his own personal parking. We don't have the room in our neighborhood to sustain that. We really don't. And that's all I have to say. We can't, we can't have that. Big, big building behind us, when there's all the other duplexes and triplexes and quads, they have parking in front of their units, off the street, in front of their units. He's not doing that. He's putting it, he's putting the parking out on, out onto our streets, which makes it more difficult for us. If he makes the parking that he wants to do going down Hayden, we won't be able to get our truck and our camper out of our backyard and take that corner, because the cars are gonna be in our way. And we can't do it. So, I vote, I really don't want him to build that many apartment complexes behind my house and block me in, because I've always had access to my backyard. And I was shocked when I came home and he had it blocked off and I couldn't get to my own backyard.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Suzie Tibbetts and I live with my boyfriend, domestic partner, in 926 West Wyeth. He's been there for 12 years and I've been there for about five. It sounds like there's no one that lives on West Wyeth that has been here that I've heard from yet. And so, we're the single-family house that would be driven past in the alleyway. Our bedroom is maybe eight feet from the alleyway. We hear every car, every repair that happens next door. So, we will have an extra 24 cars daily driving past us. And I think everybody else has backyards that are there on the alley, which is not the case for us. It is, it will be very dramatic. And we're not in an apartment. The complex across the way that I believe is a four-plex or six-plex, there has been a lot of issues with them and just with parking in general. Right now, they're remodeling it, so no one's in it. It's been very quiet. And I know as soon as people move back in, that will not be the case. And the house across the street from us that would also be on the alleyway is also an apartment, top and bottom. So, I think we're concerned about the amount of cars that will be coming in and what is gonna happen with that, especially resale on the house, if we choose, or just value of it. So, thank you.
My name is Danielle Newman. I live at 535 North Lincoln. I did submit you guys, a letter to you guys and I believe that you received it.
Will you take one step closer to the microphone, just because we're recording? Thank you.
Sorry. I believe that you received my letter, since I saw that it was published. I just wanted to say again about the, the density of the neighborhood. It's dense enough. I have a four-plex behind me that's technically considered a Wyeth address, although it doesn't touch Wyeth in any way, shape, or form. And there's another four-plex across the street from me on the other side of Lincoln. So, we have enough. I think that when you look at how he's trying to rezone this thing and take out the part that's considered, you know, too much of a slope, what you have left is not enough to build anything multifamily. At most, you could put one single-family property on there, which I don't think is his intent at all, because it seems to be, put as much stuff in, in the smallest amount of space that you can possibly put in there. And there's just simply not enough room. We also need to be able to keep access to that alley, so that we can come and go. And so, when you take that part out, then there's even a smaller amount of space that's actually buildable. So, I feel that if, the way that he's treated this property so far is any indication of what's to come, I have zero interest in even being there. He came and cut down all of these trees and then left the stumps there, sitting on the side of the road. There's garbage sitting over there. Nobody's maintaining the property. Even though it's private property, I thought that we're still required to maintain it. And so, nobody seems to have any interest in actually making this place a nice location to be. And we get a whole bunch of people packed in there. I don't know where they're gonna be putting their garbage. As it is right now, there's a dumpster right across the street from my garage that the city uses. They dump that every Thursday. I don't know how they're gonna go up and down there if he's trying to block access on the north side. It's impossible. There's not enough room for them to turn around at that location. So, backing up would be nearly impossible, too, because of the cars that are sitting over on the other side. So, thank you.
My name is Martha Jones and I live at 956 West Wyeth. And my, back of my property, I think, abridges his or is adjacent. And I, I would just like to really have you, have you consider, again, everything that everybody has said already. That neighborhood would be so congested, it would be impossible, and there would be accidents and much anger. Because it's already congested. It's, single-family dwellings are the only way to go in that part of town. I mean, the four-plexes and little larger apartment buildings are okay where they are right now. We don't need any more. We just don't. There are empty places in Pocatello where, that can be built on to accommodate that. But that's not the right place. It just isn't, for all the reasons everyone has already stated. And when those trees were removed, that was a habitat for our wildlife. We have deer in our neighborhood and raccoons and skunks and birds and squirrels. And now, I, they aren't there. The deer come, but they don't have the luxury of that place to shade up anymore. And it'll be an eyesore. Those stumps are ugly. And I do strongly suggest that you go and look for yourselves. Walk it off. Just see what's there and see our points that we make. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody?
My name is Jerry Taylor and I live at 270 Skyline Drive, above the proposed building site. I just have one observation. I noticed that everyone, and I believe Mayor Blad proclaimed a mask mandate in sight of all city buildings.
Could you please stick to the items on the agenda and how they apply to the application, please?
With, pardon?
I understand. Sir, can you stick to the items on the agenda and how it applies to the application, please?
I'm not sure I understand what your question is.
Masks or no masks doesn't affect our vote today.
Well, I wanna make that an issue. And that's my only point. If this man who's proposing this doesn't follow the mayor's mandate, then why should you expect him to care?
Sir, please sit down. You'll have your time.
I have a medical exemption.
You guys, please. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to have the opportunity to give testimony in opposition to the application?
My name is Michael Paris. I am Dylan's father. I was with him when he purchased this property. There's also public utilities underneath the alleyway that he proposes to turn into a parking lot. If that is a city line, which, if there's a manhole, at the end of it, it's possibly a city line. If that ever has to be maintained, who's gonna pay for the parking lot repairs? What's the age of that sewer line? Nobody knows. But it would be, we believe his sewer line, my son's, is connected to that sewer line. With it being underneath what he's calling his property, which should be an easement even by the city, because the city has used it as a thoroughfare. For their dump trucks, for their fire trucks. It's also fire access to the back of their properties. Injuries happen in everybody's backyard. If an injury happens to somebody, there's not enough room to get between the house and the backyard with, say, a gurney. They'd have to carry them out. By doing this, it's blocking all that first aid access. Firefighters, ambulances, I'm sure they all use that alleyway. Firefighters, ambulances, I'm sure they all use that alleyway, which they say is not an alleyway, but it looks like it's been an alleyway for years. It's also been paved at one time. Who paid for that pavement? Was it the city that paved that alleyway or was it the property owners? It's hard to say. If the city paid for it, why hasn't it been taken as eminent domain? That's just my concerns.
Anybody else? Last call. At this time, I would like rebuttal by the applicant. Sir, please stick to things that are applicable to the application.
I think I can do that. Thank you very much. How much time do I have?
It's not, I think, back to 10 minutes.
Couple items, Mr. Englesey.
No. Okay, sorry, yes.
I'm sorry?
Nope, go ahead.
The, I don't get the, the blend, the number of duplexes, fourplexes versus the number of home in the thing. It's all residential. It's not like, I, I'm not sure how that really comes into play there. Maybe we can talk about that later too because this, I don't want to use a lot of my time on, on your explanation there, but it's, it's not like they're putting in a feedlot or a, a pipe manufacturing plant or something like that. It's all residential. So I'm not sure how, I'm not sure if I understand how the mix comes into play there. I just, I wanted to go down, I've made several notes and I, I feel bad that people are so upset. Holy cow. I mean, do they think of the people that were, that they upset when they bought their home? That they caused congestion to this road? They caused congestion to the sewer line? I mean, we're, we're growing in Pocatello and I wonder what they're thinking when it comes to, when they develop a city creek, when they widen out Lincoln and come down and, and all that hillside is developed out and basically the access to it is Lincoln. People need to be careful. We, we do. We have to be careful all the time. And we've heard staff and, I'm sorry, commission, is that what it is? And staff, we've heard a lot of disinformation from these individuals, especially when it comes to fire trucks moving through there monthly. I'd really, I'm sure we can maybe get a grip on that, but I don't think that takes place. The, and then all of a sudden, there's 24 vehicles going to exit north on what is a, an alleyway to, over to Wyeth to get out? They're not going to do that. I mean, that's preposterous, but I'm sorry if the lady has, you know, traffic going past her, her bedroom because she's so close to the alleyway. I really am. But to, to tell you that, hey, I'm really going to be impacted because I've got 24 new cars going past my, my house, I think is just disingenuous. Not accurate at all. The, the privacy, you know, that just, I feel bad, but you know, if you want your privacy, move to Salmon, Idaho type of thing. Just, you've had, you had yours and now somebody else can't have theirs on, on that piece of property? I'm trying to find this one here. They've dealt all in generalities. They don't have any specifics whatsoever and I, I feel bad that their passion causes or reflects a negative aura about what's trying to be done here. Sunny Shaw, okay, for Housing Authority. You know, we need housing in Pocatello. Where are we going to stick it? Where are we going to put it? We need housing in Pocatello. Where are we going to put it? This place is suitable for at least three buildings without disturbing the, the toe of the slope. There's no intention of disturbing that. And I think all the drawings and, and Mr. Dilly has in the past figured it out that you can put those kind of buildings in there without disturbing it. It'd look neat, but it, it's not feasible. And if you want it, one lady, Martha, go look at it. Man, I'd love to have you go look at it. Let's make an appointment. Let me, let me take you. Let's, let's grab a tape measure and go out there and look at it. I think that the one gentleman also, if we can accommodate everybody, boy, wouldn't that be a happy world we can live in. But I think there's some things that can be done to accommodate some of these people. And, and they, I, I've got pictures of the, the tree stumps are not in the quote, road. I have been there to try to slow trap some of these people down, you know, the, hey, this, something's changing here. There's been allowances for a one car, two car, I mean, there's three backyards that back onto it on the east side of the property and the gentleman on the corner, Foster, Foster I think it was. And so there's, there's room enough to make everybody happy there. But the, the key thing is at what expense? Okay? There's been, I'm, I'm not going to call it expense because the city, they didn't come in there with a paver. They just dumped whatever's left over and, and spread it out to, I don't know, it's better than mud. You know, help you, help you people out and I'm sure they didn't affect your taxes. That's a freebie for you. The lady also said that-
Hey, it's not free.
Please ignore comments from the audience.
And somebody said, take out a hillside tree for parking. You know, I just, I don't know where that comes from. I've got pictures, we can, again, let's go look at it. I'd love to, me saddle up with you and go over there and look at some of these. The, the generalities and disinformation has just really been prolific here. Now the comment about the animals. Animals safe? I mean, if the animals in your yard are safe, if you let them out, run around all night, yeah, they might get squashed. That's not, not the driver's fault. It's the pet owner's fault. And just, and it's too bad that there's been shootings and we, we find that everywhere. And it's, it's sad that they cast the tenant population in such a negative light. I know a lot of good tenants that take pride in, in where they live and what they do. They clean up after themselves and they do a very nice job. And because they've had a few negative experiences with people, that everybody's a scumbag? And that's, I feel bad that we have that type of a comment because that's not true. And the poor guy that just bought his place, I'm sorry that they misrepresented what you're buying there, but again, this is going to, and maybe the people don't want an improvement to their yard. They don't want an improvement to their housing values. You know, to, to improve a piece of ground, yeah, you're going to cut down trees. You're going to move them along. I think the last thing we want to be concerned about is skunks. Because I can name you three or four people up on Canyon that call animal control every summer because of the skunks. And this is where, if this is where they've lived, it's too bad because now they're high tailing it up to their house or even more. And let's see here. Oh, fire truck to get to the backyard of people? What does 635 and 625 Willow do? They don't have a backyard. They don't have an alley. They don't have nothing. There's no fire truck going to get back there to help them. And there's a lot of alleys out on Johnson and, and Lincoln that the fire truck can't get down the alley. That's why you have fire plugs every 200, 300 feet and they've got hundreds of feet of hoses. And I, I thought this was a brilliant opportunity for this place because you've got a fire hose. If this is the stub and you've got Johnson and Willow offset here, there's fire, I mean, plugs here and plugs here and it's within acceptable lengths for them to get in there and do the job they need to do. And Mr. Dilly has already indicated that he has chased people off his land before because they stack their, I'm going to be kind and say their stuff there. And when it wasn't stuff. And he has moved them along and objected to them using that as their own private dumping yard or parking lot or. And the liquefied hillside. I've got two things. The liquefied hillside-
I was there.
I've been, I've been in that neighborhood for 30 years as well. And the only places that it liquefies is like where the stormwater lines have been disturbed, have disturbed the earth, like coming off of Skyline down to where Buchanan and Willow. It nears that area. That's where it liquefies. This kind of place, I mean, come and look at this. This, that has no evidence of liquefying and emptying anywhere there. That's where you have liquefaction of the hillside. And the destabilization of the sewer. I had Brett Van Brunt out there. What a nice guy. I, true, I don't get along with a lot of people that have positions at the city of Pocatello. Actually, I don't get along with their positions. I get, don't get along with, I do get along with people, but the positions they hold cause them some angst. But this guy went out of his way. I mean, just, and I told him that too. I said, you know, there's some people I just have a hard time getting along with, but you've done a really good job. We opened up that manhole, manhole and I, there probably isn't three or four properties on that because there was such low flow. And for an eight-inch line to have such low flow, he says there's, there's all sorts of capacity there.
Your time is up.
10 minutes, is that what it was?
Yep.
Thank you.
So at this time, I would like to declare the public hearing closed. At this time, it is up to the commission how they would like to proceed. If you have any questions for staff, you're welcome to ask them at this time.
I just have one.
No, your time's up. Thank you. Either Merrill or Jim, maybe you can answer. As far as fire trucks in an area like that, would the developer be required to make sure the development had an area that a fire truck could turn around in?
That is correct. There will be requirements during the construction phase for turnarounds coming through or through there or other roads through there so that emergency services and that can take place. Garbage trucks coming in and out, there are requirements for that.
To take care of trash for the new facilities?
For new facilities also, yes.
And then is it a correct statement that there are easements for utilities, whether it's city power, gas in that, in that right of way? And it is okay to pave and do parking, but it's not okay for permanent structures to be?
That's correct. There are, currently there are existing easements on, on the property there and you cannot place permanent structures and so forth over there. You have to maintain the access or maintenance due to these things.
Okay. Any other questions? With no other questions, at this time, I would like to entertain a motion. We can discuss amongst ourselves as well what our thoughts are as we're going through this.
I've made an extensive site visit over the course of a couple days. I walked the neighborhood extensively to get a feel for what the neighborhood currently feels like as far as housing and if this would fit the neighborhood. There's a lot of argument to be heard from the opposing that it does not fit with the current residential style of the neighborhood. However, just, and I think the applicant mentions 700 feet from the property, the 800 block of Buchanan is full of similar housing. The neighborhood is also full of duplexes and triplexes. Additionally, I've paced off the flat area that the applicant has proposed to build on. I believe that he does in fact have the square footage to put what he wants to put there without cutting into this, without major cuts into the hill, none that I deem to be over six feet, which could be remediated or mediated through the use of retaining Additionally, I don't see a lot of other uses for the property. There's a lot of talk about prospective, make sure I use the right term here. Prescriptive, excuse me. There's a lot of talk about a prescriptive easement. We don't know that. We have no record of that on the city. However, it has been used by the public for a long time and the applicant will have to, I'm sure, go through the legal procedures with any of the neighbors who may take issue with that. That's not for us to decide whether or not that is a valid easement, but the fact of the matter is, it is private property that belongs to either the applicant or the party that he represents and he should, in my opinion, should be able to use it how he feels he wants to use it. With all of those, I move to recommend approval of the zone map amendment application for Trevor Henderson to rezone the property located at the dead end of West Hayden. I recognize that the applicant does not meet the standards for approval under chapter 1702170 as found by staff, but I, I, I submit that with the conditions listed in the staff report, so long as they're followed, that we change the portion of the property in question with a slope, with slope, without slope greater than 15% be changed to RMM, while all portions of the property with slope greater than 15% shall remain as RE.
Will you just kind of briefly describe the difference between RMM and RMS, please, for us? What would that, what differences would that make for the applicant?
With RMM, like the applicant has proposed, he would be able to build multifamily units. He is permitted to build multifamily units so long as each unit has 3,630 square feet per unit with a maximum of 12 units per acre. He can also build single-family and two-family or townhomes in that zone. RMS, he would not be able to be permitted multifamily unit. He would be permitted to build townhomes, duplex and single-family out on RMS, seeing that all setback requirements and all other city requirements are met.
I believe I misspoke. I said RMS and I meant RMM to change the, let me re-read that. With the condition that a portion of the property in question with a slope less than 15% shall be zoned RMM.
The higher density.
To allow his fourplexes.
So I, I drove the property as well. I work just a couple blocks south of Fremont in the area. I know, driving down Lincoln to get to Fremont, it's, it's tight. I mean, even, even during the day, there's cars back, back to back. So if they're only allowed to rezone, I just want to make sure that everybody is understanding. So the staff is recommending that it be rezoned RMM, not RMS. Is that correct?
RMS.
RMS is what it recommends.
And that would allow- And that would allow, I'm going to write it down this time, duplexes?
Duplex, single-family, and townhomes. And no multifamily.
So that means?
Given, I'm sorry to interrupt, given that it meets the square footage requirements for each housing unit.
And that means, but if that's the case, they would have to subdivide?
Correct.
For townhomes, and you're able to do a duplex on one, if they wanted more units, they'd have to subdivide.
And have to provide access to each of those, can that access be under an easement? I know I'm asking lots of hard questions. Do you have any idea, the flat portion that you have cleared out, any idea in acres how much that is right there, rough? I know it's... Because I mean, the application, the entire, the entire thing is... I know it's on here. The entire parcel acreage?
Is 2.33 acres.
Is 2.33 acres. That, the flat portion, any guess of how many acres that is? Probably doesn't even make up the .33, right, less than that?
No, no, it meets more than that, an acre is 43,560 square feet. And so there's, you know, all I know is that a very wise gentleman and I, with a very long tape measure, walked that property, and he's kind of an artsy, particular, technical kind of guy, and we allowed for a buffer against these three properties, I'm not sure if I even want to say this, but a buffer against those three properties that would leave an opportunity open for discussion that they could get their camper out.
So here's my concern with multifamily being there. Any new, I understand that it's needed, but any new multifamily that you see, they have requirements of open space, they have, they're providing amenities for the residents and things like that. And really, the only open space I see left on here is the slopes over 15%, and it's not, there's not going to be front yards, there's not going to be backyards, there's not, and to me, when you look at the other units that are in the area, that doesn't fit in.
With the exception, again, of the 800 block of Buchanan, which is close, I would say that those, and those are backed up against a hill as well, but you're right.
So back to the 3% that he was saying in the area, right?
Yeah, when we did that analysis, it was within 300 feet of the property.
Okay.
I believe that's.
And that's part of the reason that this did not meet a lot of city code, was because if you go 300 feet around the property, there's a lot of duplexes, but there are, there's nothing similar to what the applicant's proposing. But you're correct to say that they will have no open space on the lot.
So as it is zoned, they could put a single-family home there?
Correct. It's currently RE. City suggests that we, well, the city made the recommendation, if we do any change at all, we change to RMS.
Any other commissioners have any statements they want to make, any more questions?
It looks very compact to me, but I did not go out and see the site yet, so... I think the recommendation of a mixed zone, that's what you recommend?
Yeah, it currently is mixed as well.
It is currently mixed, so the change is just to the RMS then?
That's correct.
Should that be done using another application process?
It could be through this process. It would mean that you'd approve it with the conditions listed in the staff report.
One other thing, and this is maybe for the audience's sake as much as anybody's, but we're an advisory board to the city council, so what we do and what we decide tonight will go before the city council for their approval. And anyways, this is not a final decision, I want to make that clear.
So we have a motion, we can have a second, we can have a different motion made.
Can you repeat the motion?
Oh, gosh.
I'm sorry.
Try and be a little bit more clear and concise.
Before you just repeat the motion, just say it in layman terms.
Okay. I think that, due to all the reasons I listed, while I understand the concerns of the neighbors, and I would feel the same way if I lived in that area, the fact of the matter is, is that we look at code and what's, we don't want to take away the rights of any property owners. And so my feeling is that after walking the neighborhood, after reading through the complaints that we got, those opposed that even in spite of that, Mr. Henderson and the parties he represents should be allowed to develop their private property how they want, and that it is not so far out of the grand scheme of that neighborhood that it should be allowed.
So not necessarily as they requested to rezone, but rezone as recommended by staff?
No, because the rezone requested by staff is to RMS, which would only allow for townhomes, duplexes, or single-family. My motion is to rezone it to RMM.
Oh, okay.
So that the applicant could, again, use his property as he saw fit.
Okay.
Do you want me to say that again?
No, I understand unless...
I apologize.
No, it's, no, I'm glad you're being thorough.
I don't agree. I appreciate what you're trying to do, putting in more housing, but I feel like the staff recommendation better meets the city's comprehensive plan and current zoning standards. And they're looking at the overall, how it fits with everything. And so I would say that we move to approve as long as it meets the conditions listed by staff.
So I don't...
Do I need to?
No, well, no, not yet.
I'm just in conversation, I guess, discussion.
Jim, we might need some clarification here.
Yeah.
You made a motion, and if there's no second, it fails.
Correct. She would like to move it to the conditions listed in the staff report, but as far as I understand, you, your recommendations are to not approve it.
My recommendation is, it says that it's not compliant, but if it is approved, that these conditions are recommended by staff.
So that's...
And maybe I need to better understand what that means then. Sorry, this is...
We have the option, well, we have the option to do whatever we see fit. So you can say that you would make a motion to approve it as long as it meets the conditions recommended by staff, or you can just deny it altogether.
So that's what I would make the motion, that we approve it as long as the recommendations by staff are met.
With the understanding that it wouldn't be zoned as the applicant requested at RMM, it would be rezoned to RMS.
Right, yes. So it still meets the zoning standards that are already in place? That's...
And if it was rezoned to RMS, that would allow the building of what type of structure?
Single-family home, duplex, or townhomes. Townhomes would require subdivision of the property.
Given that that meets the square footage requirement for each unit, so it will limit him on size.
I would second her motion.
You have to act on the first motion.
It failed?
So at this time, we have a motion by, sorry guys, Anderson. Wait, and second by, I know people by first names, don't worry, by Roberts, to approve the zone map amendment application for Trevor Henderson to rezone the property located at the dead end of West Hayden Street, finding the application does meet standards for approval under chapter 1702-180 of Pocatello City Code, with the conditions listed in the staff report. We have, Matt, will you please call vote?
Anderson?
Yes.
Roberts.
Roberts?
Yes.
Phillips?
No.
Chandler?
No.
And we don't have a...
So we're back to starting. So...
Can I just, for a point clarification? The application, correct me if I'm wrong, the application is to change the zoning from RE, which would only permit the applicant to build a single-family home, to RMM, which would allow the applicant to build three, fourplexes, as he intends to do. The third option is in the middle of those, which is RMS, which would allow for a townhome, a duplex, or a single-family, but no fourplexes. When you made the motion to approve of the application, we were making the motion to approve to RMM, correct?
As long as it met the conditions listed in the staff report, which would be?
Which would have moved it to RMS.
Correct.
So, isn't, okay, all right.
So the staff's conditions say everything with a steep slope stays RE, and then the lower section, which is RMS, well, not the flat area, but like where the road and the alley kind of are, are already RMS, so the flat RE would become RMS, which everything else in the area is zoned RMS, correct?
Correct.
So that's the same as denying of the application, with, I guess, the condition, because the application is to move it to RMM, so whether we approve or whether, and again, this is probably semantics and not important at this meeting at this point, but I just wanted to be clear there.
So...
Because if we approve it, but say that it has to follow the staff reports, then it doesn't approve it to RMM, it approves it to RMS. I guess if we want to get technical...
Right. I mean, I guess...
If we deny it, then, anyways, I just wanted to be clear on that, and I'm sure that I understood that correctly, what exactly we were approving, and I think I understand now, so thank you.
So I have a question then. The site plan that's submitted with this, is that like the, has it been approved?
No, that will come back.
That's something different later, so if the zoning doesn't meet it, then the site plan would have to be.
That's just a theory, you know, best, here's some ideas that, given what we have to deal with, the number of square footage, and the size of a building, and how many parking spaces that they are looking for, this would fit very easily with the open space, the truth feel like there isn't any open space, but that was just a conceptual plan, I think that's the word these guys like to use, a conceptual plan.
So if he wanted, if he wanted to, when it comes back to the site plan, all we're doing is zone change, we're not doing anything with this.
That's what I thought, reconfigure it.
Reconfigure it. That's why I think it's important that we keep the slopes as they are, so they can't be touched. And if we are going to rezone the flat, I'll just throw it out, I'll say no as long as we're doing fourplexes, so we might be here all night.
Could you say that one more time?
I don't think fourplexes will fit in here, especially three of them, so I'll say no every time.
So I think, I know you voted no, but I think that's what they were also saying.
That's...
I mean, the staff report clearly shows that.
Right, but I guess I should also clarify, I don't know if I'm comfortable rezoning it at all.
Okay. Then I would move to deny the zone map amendment application from Trevor Henderson, deep to the fact that it does not meet the compliance requirements noted by the city staff.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Roberts, a second from Anderson, Matt, will you call vote, please?
Roberts?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Phillips?
No.
Chandler?
Yes. With that, the motion passes to deny the application. Just a reminder that this will be taken to city council again, and at this time, we will move on to agenda item number four. Rich, do you want to come run this? Because I obviously had a hard time.
I started mine.
Say that again.
This is going to take five seconds, I guess. If you're good with that, unless, do you need a shorter break?
Is it, so I just read?
We're still in, um, sorry, thank you. We're still in a meeting.
I mean, I got another page of the...
You'll have to submit that to the city.
Would you like me to give it to you?
Whatever is in the same packet that you received.
Planning and Development Services.
I thought it was you.
No, it'll go through the Planning and Development Services people.
Sorry. Hey, guys, would you mind stepping outside? The meeting's still in session.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Okay, I was kind of listening, oh, we're going to start, Terry said, okay.
So do I, do I read mine?
You know, I've never done this, I have no idea.
Protocol requires that commission members and audience be recognized by the commission chair prior to speaking. Number four, and then I'll read that.
It's not public hearing, correct?
Yes, it is.
It's this. What do I need? Am I on the last? Oh, it's on the, sorry. I haven't done this before, so you'll have to bear with me.
It's just us now, Cindy, so.
This is a good one to learn on.
There it is, okay.
So agenda, aren't they, agenda item four, public hearing?
I don't need to say protocol.
No.
Oh, okay. Well, this is my learning curve, so thanks for bearing with me. Agenda item, item number four is a public hearing. Zone map and comprehensive plan amendment. For Neighbor Works Pocatello has submitted an application for a zone map and comprehensive plan amendment to rezone approximately 3.02 acres of property from commercial, general, to residential, commercial, professional. The subject property is located at the 2,000 block of South Fifth Avenue. I declare this public meeting open. I would like to invite the applicant to come to the podium.
Good evening, commission. My name is Crystal Chanda with A&E Engineering, and I am here to represent the applicant, Neighbor Works Pocatello. We have requested a zone change for 3.02 acres located in, on, between South Fifth and South Fourth, from commercial, general, to residential, commercial, professional. The property has a truck repair place located north of it, the cemetery to the east, primetime auctions to the south, and the Bengal Creek, Bengal Creek apartments to the west. The lots have set undeveloped for many years. Development will provide much-needed housing to improve this area aesthetically. It will blend nicely with the surrounding, with apartments across Fourth and then just one block south. It is easily served by utilities from both Fourth and Fifth. All property owners within 300 feet were notified. We only heard from one property owner ourselves. His concern was that he would not be, with the rezone, he would not be able to access his property from Fourth Street. However, his property does abut Fourth Street. And as part of this project, we will be constructing a street in the city of Pocatello right-of-way, which is just approximately 200 feet or so from the back property line. So in closing, I would like to ask for approval of the rezone, considering that it blends nicely with the surrounding area and that this is the first step to taking a lot that has been undeveloped for years and turning it into some highly-needed housing.
Thank you. Presentation by staff.
Good evening, commission members. Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city. As noted, Mark Dawkis representing Neighbor Works Pocatello has submitted an application requesting to rezone parcel one and parcel two of Pocatello C store at O.C. from commercial, general, to residential, commercial, professional. The proposed change also requires a concurrent amendment to the comprehensive plan map, land use map, from the current designation of commercial to mixed use. The subject parcels are undeveloped and currently zoned commercial, general. Both parcels are flat, powerfully bounded by South Fifth and, South Fourth and Fifth Avenues on the east and west, with an unimproved, unimproved deed at right-of-way by second of the two parcels. Both, as noted, both parcels are zoned commercial, general, with comprehensive plan map designation of commercial. Parcels have been zoned CG since at least 1981, remaining vacant over the past 40 years. Under the current code, residential uses are permitted outright and upper stories provided dead ground for commercial use is also provided on property. The commission recently recommended approval to the city council to eliminate the wording, upper stories. And just as a side note, the city council did-
Can we just call a please?
Recommend approval of that change.
Okay.
Or actually made, made a decision on, to make that change. Based on the current ordinance section and proposed amendment, the applicant has the opportunity to develop multifamily housing without rezoning parcels. Should be also noted that if developed with storefront commercial, then residential development would not be required to maintain a minimum lot size of square footage, thus allowing for increased density. The minimum under RCP would be 1,452 square feet per unit. Access to both parcels may be accomplished via South Fourth and Fifth Avenues. Additionally, there is a, as noted, a deed of right-of-way extending use and less between the two parcels. Therefore, development will require the owner to place curb, gutter, sidewalk adjacent either parcel and also on Fourth and Fifth. The maximum height permitted in the RCP zoning district is 45 feet. As noted, the Village Apartments located, are located about 900 feet plus or minus south and approximately, or about approximately 35 feet, as are the Bengal Creek Apartments. Multi-unit, multi-unit housing or any other permitted development is anticipated to be compatible in terms of scale, mass, coverage, density, and intensity. Development of the parcels may also result in spurring additional improvements to the area. In staff, so, in summary, staff finds that the list of uses permitted in the RCP zoning district and the applicant's desire to construct low-to-moderate housing would not be out of character with existing land uses. The full analysis is detailed in my staff report. Should the commission recommend approval of the subject application, staff recommends the conditions as outlined. This concludes my presentation.
Okay. And was there written correspondence submitted for the record?
Uh, I have not, I haven't.
Okay. So before starting public testimony, I would like to remind each person, when you come to the podium, you must state your name. Please remember to address the commission rather than the audience or the applicant. You will be given three minutes and will be asked to stop when time runs out. Keep questions and comments pertinent to the application, and do not duplicate questions, concerns, or comments covered by previous testimony heard. Anyone providing testimony by those supporting the application?
Yeah. Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, I guess it is tonight, that in commission members, sure. Um, I'm Mark Dawkis, the executive director at Neighbor Works Pocatello, 206 North Arthur. And I think that Crystal really covered everything pretty thoroughly, as well as the staff report. Just if you're curious, that parcel two on the map there, that we've made application through Idaho Housing and Finance for some low-income housing tax credits. And what that would do if we awarded those, that we would build a 49-unit complex there for senior citizens, for low-income seniors. And on this, on affordable housing, that can take on a lot of different meanings, but this truly is affordable housing because only folks that are below 60% of very median income can live there. And so we're kind of mandated, I guess, to have the low-income housing. And so that development would take place on the parcel two. But where we were already going through the rezoning request on parcel two, we recently purchased parcel one. And we are a low, yeah, an affordable housing developer, so we don't have plans for parcel one yet. But like I say, we're an affordable housing developer, so, you know, expect some kind of housing there in the future. And we've been told today that our application is going to be very competitive with Idaho Housing. That last year, about a dozen entities applied for that, and this year, there were just five. And so last year, five were funded. And so we're feeling really good about our chances, but we won't know until November or December if we get that accepted. And then as far as the site itself, that, you know, too busy one-way streets along the sides there, so definitely can handle the traffic. And as was stated, and it's on the bus route and close to a lot of amenities and close to Ross Park. As Crystal said, it's been well over 40 years since any development has happened there. It's been a vacant parcel of land really forever, it seems like. So it's going to bring new viability to that area. So other than that, we think it's a great location. The Village Apartments and Bengal Creek and others are right there. So, you know, I don't think this will be a sore thumb and will fit right in. So obviously, I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone providing testimony by those uncommitted on the application? Or anyone who's testimony by opponent to the application? Rebuttal by the applicant? No? Okay. I declare this public hearing closed.
I think, I think we have to entertain a motion.
Oh, sorry.
No, you close it first and then entertain the motion.
Okay. How does the commission wish to proceed?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the application from Neighbor Works Pocatello to rezone the subject parcels as described in the application and depicted on the map to residential, commercial, professional, as well as a comprehensive plan map to be amended to mixed use. Finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 1702 180 of Pocatello Municipal Code.
Second.
Oh, please, Matt, can you call a vote?
Phillips?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay.
This brings us to the end of our agenda, and the meeting is now closed at 8:12.